Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow, the whole room could say that at the same time this time. Good evening, everyone. As you can see, that we are back in person at the town hall for these meetings. We are, however, well, let me start with the formal stuff. So in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel and on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page. The agenda that's posted lists all topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. As we come out of Zoom meetings, I believe this is our first in-person meeting in, I don't know, 14 months?
Four hundred and fifty days.
Four hundred and fifty days. Okay, I'm glad you didn't do that in minutes. We are trying to incorporate some of the technology that we used during the pandemic and bring that over to our live meetings. So we are continuing the Zoom part of our meetings in conjunction with the in-person meetings. We are doing this as courtesy, so anybody who would like to watch the meeting and participate in public comment, public comment only for the select board of the meeting, can do so via Zoom or if you don't have cable and want to see the meeting, et cetera. However, anybody having business before the board that's on the agenda will need to be here in person. That is important, so that's something we're going to do. But I will be taking public comment and we're going to see how it goes, how this easily or doesn't easily fold into our normal meeting. You can find the Zoom meeting ID on the agenda for the select board at the town website. But for tonight, I will say that the webinar ID is nine zero nine one seven four zero three four seven. That is unlikely to change from meeting to meeting, so I will say it again, nine zero nine one seven four zero three four seven. So if you want to join by Zoom, you can use that webinar ID. I want to acknowledge it's great to be back and I, you know, there are three of our members here that this is their first ever in-person meeting with the Board of Selectmen, so Mr. Marino and Mr. Dwyer, who got elected last year during the pandemic, have never been at an in-person meeting, and Mr. Franco, who got elected this year, this is his first meeting. He only had to wait a few weeks, so. So it's great to have everybody here in person. It brings a whole different dynamic and it makes it more seamless than for one person as the Chair of the Board who has to run the Zoom meeting and try to keep everybody in line and try to run the meeting and participate. This will be a welcome change because it'll be a lot easier to call on people and see whose hand is raised since they have to just physically raise their hand, so it's a lot easier than looking at the screen. I would open it up to the Board for any public comment. Anyone? No, they're all overjoyed though to be here. Any public comment from the public? Also no. Any announcements? I do want to announce one thing. I want to thank the Lunenburg Lions Club for the repainting of the gazebo this Sunday, so that was an excellent volunteer job. I want to thank them for organizing it and everybody who came out to participate. It looked great and we're actually going to be using the sparkling white paint as a reflection place for a Pride event that's coming up this Wednesday. Is that on here as an announcement or do you have that as an announcement?
I was gonna.
Okay, so you'll find out whether it's going to be used. But I want to thank everybody for doing that. It's really showing and it all looks wonderful and I want to thank the gardeners for doing the great job in Town Center already for that as well, so. Town manager announcements.
Yes, as a follow-up item from our last meeting, as far as the date for the Pride Flag raising event, that'll be tomorrow at 7:00 PM on the Upper Town Common, and that is the common adjacent to us, right in front of the Village Building. So that'll be 7:00 PM. It'll be a 15 to 20 minute ceremony approximately, and so all are welcome.
And I want to just say in advance, I unfortunately will not be able to attend because I will not be in town, so the Vice Chair, Mr. Jeffries, will be speaking on behalf of the Board at that ceremony, so thank you, Mr. Jeffries. Okay, any other announcements?
None.
All right, appointment seven oh five, almost on time. Council on Aging Director, end of year report. Ms. Dougherty? I hope so. I don't know.
So, my name is Sue Dougherty. I'm the Director at the Lunenburg Council on Aging and I think our Council on Aging Board was the first Board in this town to meet in person this morning at 9:30 AM. So they were all real happy to be there and we gave a little report end of year. I know it's not quite the end of June yet, but I don't think things are going to change too much in the numbers. So I have a PowerPoint presentation. I don't know if they're gonna.
We're gonna see it behind you, yeah, and we also have it on our.
So anyways, we just want to let you in on what's been going on during COVID. I mean, it's been a real change for us all. We like to say we were hitching our wheel to a new wagon. Slide number two. We did volunteer recognition by drive-through. So that was awkward, but it was different, but it was good. It worked out. And then on the next slide, number three, I like to say, and I stole this from the post office, and it says neither snow nor rain nor heat nor COVID-19 stays these couriers from the swift completion of their appointed ranks. And that goes for the staff and the Meals on Wheels riders, who really, they continued delivering through the entire process and it was, they were just phenomenal. In the next slide, we work well with others, with the Police Department, with the Fire Department, different organizations in town, the Lions Club, Salvation Army, the Sheriff's Department, Mr. County Sheriff's Department. And PJ Keatings came through this year and gave out about eighty-nine Christmas stockings to our elders at another drive-through event. Uh-oh.
No one can hear you.
Hello? Okay. So like I just said, we did, you know, all the community came together and helped out. Anything we asked for, we got. We got a lot of grants, a lot of donations. Some of the churches gave us gift cards to purchase food items for the drive-through events. And that was really good. And if you go to the next slide, what we tried to do was keep our clients engaged with different things. We had three drive-throughs every single week. On Tuesdays, it was coffee and donuts. Thursdays was free lunch. Everything was free. And Fridays was either like a lemonade and ice cream or some sort of grab-bag event. We did a takeaway tea party, which was cool. We did a giddy-up-grab-and-go with a cowboy boot and root beer and vanilla ice cream for root beer floats. The Fire Department came and did a hot dog day. We had outdoor events. We did indoor exercise classes, all socially distanced, of course, but we did, I can't even list them all. I mean, that's why I just put some pictures on there because I didn't have enough room to write this on there, so. But in the recreation stats in the next one, I did a little comparison to FY-20, which isn't quite fair because we were open part of the year for FY-20 with regular events going on, so you can see that there's an unduplicated and duplicated count, and the unduplicated is you count the person one time and the duplicated is how many times they came in for different services. So we had seven hundred and sixty-five people in FY-20 for nine thousand and seventy-seven different services. And in FY-21, we had three hundred and fifty-six for five thousand four hundred and forty services. Most of that was the drive-through events. We did get into the Zoom worlds, which was interesting. Zoom bingo is very interesting. And we just did a tour of the Wang Theater via Zoom yesterday, which was really cool. We did a Zoom coffee shop. Pauline, our outreach coordinator, organized that one. We did a Zoom book club, and I'm just glad we don't have to Zoom anymore, so this is good. Transportation stats, they didn't change too drastically. People weren't going. Doctors' appointments, they were not taking patients in. The numbers held their own. Last fiscal year, we had fifty-nine riders. This year, we had forty-nine. It's not too far off, but it's starting to climb now. The van's really picking up. And we have a new third van driver added to take up the slack, so. So rather than go through all the other stats again, I just did some notable ones. I mean, we did so many different things and the list is long, but basically the big ones were we assisted eighty-three people with booking vaccine appointments, whether that be with the Board of Health over at Devon's, through the massvaxhelp.com site, which worked out really well because the people got in very quickly and were able to be served at CVS in Lunenburg. That was really good. The Gardener one, we helped people get into that, Lemonster in Fitchburg. We also sent out two thousand two hundred and sixty-two wellness postcards to people in Lunenburg, and that is to residents with people age sixty-plus in it. So this is well over three thousand people age sixty-plus in Lunenburg. We tried not to duplicate it. And we actually gained seventy-seven new clients during COVID, which is unusual. Usually we have the same amount, which is not much, maybe six or seven, but during the COVID, we can only count them one time. We had seventy-seven new clients come on board and they're returning customers. As we open up the Senior Center, they have been coming in and taking part in activities, so that's great. Meals on Wheels, that didn't really change. We had fifty-nine clients. Seven thousand and seventy-two Meals on Wheels were delivered by our great drivers. They were wonderful. And the big thing that we had going on, Pauline Roy, our outreach coordinator, she was, she just got trained as a SHINE Health Insurance Counseling Person. And that stands for serving health insurance needs of everyone in-house, which is huge because they normally come out of Central Mass Agency on Aging. And they used to come up once a month and counsel people with Medicare and things like that, which is very difficult to navigate. And now we have our own person in there, and so far she's seen twenty-five clients and helps them through the process of, you know, when you turn sixty-five and switching over your insurance, and she's doing a great job at that. And we're doing great things down at the Senior Center right now. We're working outside. We're, we have a tent coming for the summer, permanent for the summer. We're open for business out there with the barchie and all that good stuff and community gardens. The Lunenburg Police and Fire are putting on a Welcome Back to the Senior Center cookout next Friday, which is going to be great. We have cornhole, barchie, horseshoes, music, chili, hot dogs, hamburgers, so, and it's all free, thanks to these guys. Other than that, everything is going along pretty smooth. Uneventful year, looking forward to getting back to normal, or whatever that is, and we're looking forward to it. It's been exciting and hasn't really been awful for us. It's been awful for the people, but it's really good now, much better. And that's all I got.
Do you have anybody, have any questions for Council on Aging Director? No.
I want to thank you for the continued excellent work that you do there. It really is a jewel and one of the many jewels in town. And I thank you for, during a very trying year, I'm glad you said, you know, it wasn't as bad for the center, but I know some people in town, the seniors in town who are members there, really look forward to it and and for all the innovation that really helped during the year was, was critical to some of these people who otherwise would have been home all, you know, without any contact at all, so.
Well, thank you, but I really want to thank the, the Town Manager. She kept us going. You know, I know there's still some councils on aging that are not open and the town halls are not open and it's, it's crazy. It's sad. But, you know, and like I said, the Police and Fire, the Library, everybody worked together and it was great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Seven fifteen. A weekday entertainment license from Smokestack Roasters LLC, 39 Mass Ave. Greetings. Just on time, perfect. Okay, you have a request for a weekday entertainment license, so why don't you tell us about that?
So now that the COVID restrictions are relatively over, I'd like to get on with having some live entertainment throughout the weekday and on Saturdays as well. We have a great space. We play a room. A lot of people have approached us about having live music, so we thought it would be a nice compliment. We have beer and wine license and we wanted to bring more food trucks back to the back of the mountain and have, you know, just kind of a more afternoon events going on.
This would be indoor?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And for those there, I'm assuming you've provided these potential hours of live entertainment, this list, so Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM are the potential hours of live entertainment, and Friday and Saturday from 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM. So.
Those are the potential, but I highly doubt we'll be playing music at 6:00 AM. I just wanted to make sure we covered.
Well, I have some, probably some, some neighbors who may have some say of what kind of music you're playing at 6:00 AM.
We solemnly swear not to play any bad music if that makes any difference.
I don't, I, I don't anticipate any problems. I know you'll be excellent neighbors.
Awesome. We'll be respectful.
Can you just clarify your current hours that are on your license as well?
For the mountain wine license, yeah. I believe it's eleven to midnight. And we just figured we'd cover this, all the timeframe that we possibly would be open for the live entertainment. But we'll still abide by the rules and, and hours of the mountain license.
Okay, this has all been paid, correct?
Yes.
And everything has checked in an order? I will open it up to the Board if anybody has any questions.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Marino?
And I assume everybody's tip, tip-trained and so forth.
Not all the staff, but anyone that is there. There's the person in charge and we have an alcohol log and we have strict policies and procedures. Everyone's aware of our policies, but there will always be at least one E-Tip certified person who is physically serving and checking licenses and doing all of the requirements.
Does the town have a copy of your policy?
They have a copy of last year's. I didn't know that I needed to sign it when there was no changes, so we'll be up to regulations.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Jeffries?
I have two kind of comments. The first is, um, thank you. Thank you first for, for being here. And it would be helpful if all of your staff are tip-certified.
I agree.
So that would be a good policy to implement. I'm, I'm not really in favor of 6:00 AM, so what's, what's your,
I don't think our neighbors are either.
Realistically, what's your earliest time that you're really looking at?
Realistically, we're trying to do these events after we close at 3:00, so we close at 3:00 and then we would turn on the evening afternoon hour, so no earlier than noon at the earliest. I mean, I don't see any morning music any time soon.
So if this timeline was pushed back to 9:00 AM, is that something that you?
Yeah, that would be fine. I would certainly abide by that.
So then I would propose that we modify the hours to 9:00 AM?
Second with that?
I'll second.
We don't disturb the neighbors before they try to.
Any other comments about that?
I didn't have an issue with the 6:00 AM, knowing, you know, how they run their business. As Chairman Alonso said, I, I think, I'm sure they'll be good neighbors, even if we gave them the flexible time. You know, for example, if, you know, if they could have someone in there, you know, doing a little acoustic set or something early in the morning, that wouldn't, that wouldn't cause me any issue, but, you know, if they don't object to 9:00 AM, I don't either.
Would prefer six, if that's all right.
Well, then I have a couple of questions.
Okay, be good.
So can you, I mean, how close are you to the nearest residents? I think you're.
There's a neighbor who's budding our property from the back, and then the other one is across Mass Ave, so two thousand, three thousand feet from the back door.
Okay, and we don't, I mean, I know that in town, we don't allow construction activities which generate noise to begin at 6:00 AM. And what concerns me is not so much your setup as much as a precedent for us as a community, that it would be difficult for us to deny other applications that also ask for 6:00 AM.
Is there a noise ordinance time?
No, that's why.
Okay, so you're trying to sound like a president that says don't start pulling jackknives at 6:00 AM.
Yeah, I'm wondering, I'm wondering then if there's some compromise to be had here. So Mr. Dwyer has noted that, you know, he can envision some kind of acoustic set early in the morning. Is that also kind of what you're thinking as well?
Absolutely. I wouldn't want to make enemies of our neighbors. Like, we're on great terms with the ones around us and so I wouldn't want to have any problems with that. I don't know if it would be, if we could set like a soft, you know, opening that says do loud music after, you know, before, you know, nine or noon or whatnot. I don't know if that's feasible, but I assure you it won't be causing a problem.
What's the, to the Town Manager, what's the renewal on this?
This would be till, I'm not sure actually, for the entertainment. I think it's, so it's annual.
Annual, yeah, I was gonna say it's annual.
So it'll expire in, in December?
Yeah.
Yep, so could we review it at that time, maybe?
I mean, I'll then move, I'll remove my motion tonight and that gives us a good, you know, I'm sure you're not going to be problematic neighbors.
Thank you.
And if anyone comes with any concerns about, hey, it's six o'clock and I gotta, then we'll talk about it then, but we trust that that one, yeah.
That sounds great.
To the Chair, remove that proposal.
I would also, I would also not, without making a deformal motion, I would request that, like, although we have no ordinance, one of the things I would say that I think is reasonable is that you can't hear the music from like thirty feet outside the building in any part of the building.
Absolutely. So the only doors that we would have open would be out towards Mass Ave. They would be towards the neighbor behind there and whatnot. There's actually a saxophone player that cranks it out that whole neighborhood, so I don't think it'll be any louder than him.
He's not, he's not coming before us with an entertainment license.
But I don't want to be responsible for his noise.
But, Mr. Marino? Oh, yep, yep.
I just want you to know, I share the same sentiments as, as Mr. Dwyer exactly, but I also share some of the concerns that Silicon Jeffries has as well. And there is, there is a reasonableness factor under the state law for noise and as I think you pointed out, contractors can't come out before seven o'clock, so.
Okay.
Just keep that in mind. It's not like it's, there's no regulation. There is. There's a state regulation. So I just wanted to know, I share both Mr. Dwyer's and Mr. Jeffries' concerns. And I know you want to really love this, but your business, there's no question you run the good business.
I mean, you can even say that I wouldn't have any amplified music afternoon if that's fair.
Yep.
You know, because acoustic would be something we'd want in the morning. I don't want to hear that loud and noisy in the morning either, so.
Well, as Mr. Jeffries alluded to, I mean, because this is an annual license, if anything would happen, then we'll just be here, and I hope we're not, because again, I trust that you'll run this, that this will not be an issue, so.
Yeah, I'll answer the music next year. We'll talk about it. All the performance evaluation.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No.
Then I would entertain a motion regarding the request for a weekday entertainment license at Smokestack Roasters LLC, 39 Mass Ave.
I'll make that motion.
Sue, okay, motion to approve and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Okay, when, I'll send this down for signing. When can they pick this up?
I hope it's ready tomorrow.
No heavy metal before noon. And let me know when it's going to be, all right? Okay, interviews, appointments, reappointments, resignations. So we have the ratification of the Town Manager's appointment of full-time Police Officer Robert DeCosta effective June 27, 2021. Please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Lieutenant Jeffrey Tivodov of the Lunenburg Police Department. I set forth the following letter from Chief Gamble. During the month of May, we have lost two officers, one to attrition and the other to the Massachusetts State Police Academy, as well as losing two officers in May. We are anticipating Sergeant Connery retiring during the summer, possibly in July, and adding an officer during FY-2022. As you can see, we have two immediate openings and two additional positions in FY-22. This essentially creates four open positions to immediately fill. One of the vacancies, the position was posted internally. I'm pleased to recommend Reserve Officer Robert DeCosta for the appointment to the position of full-time police officer. Officer DeCosta has been a reserve officer with the department since 2012, a reserve officer with Foxborough Police Department since 2011, and is currently a lieutenant with the Fitchburg Fire Department. Officer DeCosta has decided to leave the fire service to become a full-time police officer. Officer DeCosta has completed the Central Mass Chiefs of Police Association and the Massachusetts Municipal Police Training Committee Reserve Intermittent Academy in December of 2029. Officer DeCosta has an Associate Science Degree in Fire Science from Mount Wachusia Community College and is pursuing a Bachelor Degree from the Colombian Southern University with a concentration in arson investigations. Officer DeCosta is a certified CPR First Responder Instructor for the department and has completed yearly in-service training, as well as specialized training courses while employed as a reserve officer. Among the specialized training he has completed is the Basic Motorcycle School and is currently assigned to the Semelik Motorcycle Unit. Officer DeCosta is truly a dedicated individual, as can be seen through his resume.
This meeting is being recorded. Sorry.
And his commitment that he had with the department. Officer DeCosta's dedication and commitment is exemplified by filling one of the open shifts on a regular scheduled basis while maintaining his full-time position with the Fitchburg Fire Department. Officer DeCosta also regularly works open shifts, prisoner watches, grant-funded directed patrols and desk shifts. Officer DeCosta is an extremely proactive officer while on patrol, whether it's covering shifts or during directed patrol assignments. Although Officer DeCosta is currently a reserve officer, he consistently displays maturity and leadership qualities that reflect that of an experienced full-time officer. I am excited that Officer DeCosta has decided to transition to a full-time police officer. Year after year, as openings have occurred, I have encouraged and tried to recruit Officer DeCosta to the full-time ranks. Officer DeCosta will have an immediate impact within our department and will transition easily to the full-time police officer. To fill our immediate needs, I have applied for a temporary waiver from the MPTC to allow Officer DeCosta to work a full-time police officer for two hundred and seventy days. During this time period, the Bridge Academy should be fully operational and Officer DeCosta will be able to complete the required training to be a certified full-time police officer. I request that Officer Robert DeCosta be appointed to the position of full-time police officer effective June 27 of 2021. Thank you for my consideration and my request. Please feel free to reach out to me. Chief Thomas Gamble.
Thank you. Officer DeCosta, would you like to say anything beforehand?
No.
Man, a few words. First of all, obviously you've been a reserve officer in, in Lunenburg for a long time, as well as other places, and while having a full-time fire position, so you heard what the chief said, very, spoke very highly of you and obviously you know the town well. If you've served here for, it sounds like nine years. I don't know when in 2012 you started, but coming up on nine years if it isn't already. So I would, I appreciate you stepping forward and, and choosing a law enforcement career over fire. I don't know that, you know, we need both, but I'm glad you chose one, especially in this case. I would open it up to the Board if anybody has any questions or comments for.
I'd like to make a few comments.
Mr. Marino?
All good. Well, first of all, I, I'd like to say that I'm, I'm envious of the Police Chief because I too have been trying to get Rob for all those years to come on full-time and I knew it was, or I at least thought that it was an effort and futility every time because he had such a great job. You know, robbed a full-time firefighter in Fitchburg. He's gone up through the ranks. He's presently a lieutenant, correct? Which is fairly high rank in a city police, uh, fire department. So somebody I've held in very high regard, obviously we all have. And I'm sure had timing right, midnight day shift, probably sleeping right now. and right, midnight day shift, probably sleeping right now, they'd all be here for him, I know they would. Um, great guy, I wish you the best of luck. His resume speaks for itself. He works for the Foxborough Police Department part-time, he's a Semelik Motorcycle Officer, uh, he worked for the State Police as a dispatcher at one time. In fact, all of these things he did, firefighter, dispatcher, reserve police officer in Foxborough and in Lunenburg, all at the same time, am I right? Unbelievable. Uh, just stellar, so, got my vote, no question.
I, I think we got that impression. Anybody else from the board?
Yeah, I'll make a brief comment. Mr. DeCosta and I had a chance over the pandemic actually to talk a little more at length, and, uh, we grew up together at one degree of separation apart, and I know that he comes from an outstanding family, committed to equality, you know, equity, and, uh, I have no doubt, I can certainly say that he's a outstanding character, as Mr. Marino also said, so this is certainly, uh, one of the, I look forward to this appointment tonight. Thank you.
Well, without further ado, I would entertain a motion regarding the ratification of the appointment of the town manager of full-time police officer Robert DeCosta.
And I would gladly move, uh, to make that appointment.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It is unanimous. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I want to thank the fellow officers for supporting him in the, and Lieutenant, thank you for reading the, uh, letter from the chief.
Thanks, Joe.
You too. Okay, ratification of the town manager's appointment of a senior videographer, Daniel Semenatori.
That speaks for itself, that I'm asking for the ratification for, uh, the senior videographer, Daniel Semenatori, tonight, and this is a recommendation brought forth, uh, to me from the PAC manager and the assistant town manager who did the interviews.
Okay. I'm assuming there's a reason why he's not here before us, as we usually request of people who are new?
Uh, not all, it's usually-
No, I don't want it, I don't want it to reflect that. All right, there it is. So you're working tonight, all right. All right, so on the record showed that the candidate who's being appointed is working tonight, that's why he's here. Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
That's what we need to know, right?
Right, that makes the appointment even easier.
Yeah.
So I would entertain a motion regarding the ratification of the town manager's appointment of senior, senior videographer, Daniel Semenatori.
So moved.
Second.
All those in, any further discussion? I haven't had that in the last few times. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. All right, good luck, Daniel. Current business, so a discussion as pay-as-you-throw bag program and fees for FY twenty-two, Adam Town Manager.
Yes. So as a, um, follow-up to something in my town manager's report last week, um, I wanted to just, um, review some information from last week to this week on the pay-as-you-throw program, and I had hoped to have a recommendation to you tonight, um, but there's still pending information that, um, waiting on. Um, so there are multiple variables that come into play with the, the pay-as-you-throw program and the cost for the program. This year, um, we saw, and when we received the new updated numbers on the amount of bags that were sold through the program, through our vendor, um, Way Zero, there was a large increase in this year's, um, bags versus our estimates that we use to build the enterprise account, um, revenue projections and costs. So we saw, um, approximately, I think it was thirty-eight percent increase in small bags, twenty percent in large bags, and over two-hundred percent increase in extra-large bags. So although you would think that, you know, it would be a sliding scale as far as cost of the program and everything, um, it actually, um, provided additional revenue, so a surplus in the enterprise account, because our collection, um, rate stays, uh, the same throughout the year, so that annual cost is the same. So provided, we are, we're estimating Finance Director and I, a surplus of between forty and fifty thousand at the close of this year. So that's one factor, um, that will come into play with bag cost, um, but our collection rate will go from about three-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, um, year, just the collection portion, not the disposal, um, to four-hundred-and-nineteen, that's our estimate, four-hundred-and-nineteen thousand. So, um, that, as well as, um, projecting what our estimated number of, uh, cases of bags that we are going to sell annually will play into the, the cost of the bags. So I'm waiting on additional information on fiscal twenty bags, how many were sold, and looking at that versus fiscal twenty-one, try to project, um, knowing that this past year, everyone being home, um, more people were generating more trash. So using a blended method, uh, looking at the two, uh, estimates. The other factor was, um, the last meeting, Sleckman Jeffries, um, inquired about creating a program for seniors to create some relief for pay-as-you-throw bags. So, um, between last week and tonight, uh, Sleckman Jeffrey and I spoke multiple times, um, both different scenarios, uh, he did, um, some research on his end, um, with one of the, uh, local distributors on seeing, uh, feasibility of a certain scenario, and I did some inquiries on my part. My recommendation, um, at this point, without knowing all the logistics of how it would be worked out, is, um, we're able to use our recycling dividends program funds, uh, it's grant funds we receive every year for recycling, towards the purchase of bags. So we could use, um, that for, to pay for the cost of bags that would be, be provided to seniors. We'd have to supplement the cost of the collection and disposal with the enterprise account funds, so that could be done with the surplus, uh, funds of this year. Um, so depending on the, you know, all the logistics, meaning how many cases we're going to provide, um, looking at the number of households, um, we could give out bags to. I spoke with the Senior Center Director, and she would be agreeable to, um, handing out those bags. It'd be a natural place for people to go, and it actually encouraged more people to go to the Senior Center and maybe increase their, um, activity level and people participating at the Senior Center. So, uh, that's one piece, um, as well as, um, how much projecting the costs. So that, those, all those factors come into play with the pay-as-you-throw bag program. Um, they, Senior Center, another piece of, um, doing this relief program would be tracking it, and they have the My Senior Center, uh, program at the Senior Center that I'll speak with the Senior Center Director about if we can create module when they check in, so we can track which households receive bags. So, um, they'd be evenly distributed and such.
So right now, but right now, that's the aim, but it's a little premature because you don't have all the data, is that correct?
Right, correct.
I, I also want to say that while I, I, I'm for the, the impetus behind this, I also don't want to get caught in a place where we, the logistics of doing it costs more than the savings that we're saving seniors. I mean, so I want to save seniors, but it's got to be a program that works and is, and is, you know, it, it is practicable.
Yes.
Uh, so, I'm just mindful of that, that, you know, I'm going to rely on your recommendation about if that is true or not, or if it's involving too many people and too much tracking of things, that, you know, we wind up spending more time in manpower, uh, tracking it and implementing it than it is saving us, so.
May I speak first?
Sure.
Uh, so Heather and I, I want, I want to just highlight what, the summary of what Heather just said, which is that, you know, this would provide seniors with an opportunity to pick up bags at the Senior Center at no cost, and that's a really big deal, um, if we can make it work. You know, one of the things that, that Heather and I discussed over the last week was exactly your point, Mr. Chair, which was, how can this be implemented in a way that doesn't then create a huge hardship and issue on vendors, because that, I'm, I'm, was working on the vendor portion of this. Uh, and it is going to be challenging, because there, the main issue is control, uh, but the solution that, that Heather's proposing tonight, if we can get it to work, it seems to be, and, and the, the ability for it to be administered easily and seamlessly, I think is a critical part.
Okay.
And if that can occur, uh, I think this will be a really big deal for our town.
Sure.
Could I make a comment as well?
You may.
Um, yeah, I, I, I like what I'm hearing, because I, while I was with Mr. Jeffries on the spirit of the idea, when he first introduced it at the last meeting, I certainly had concerns about implementation and tracking, and knowing now that, you know, that the Senior Center is willing to do that, that's, um, that allays those concerns substantially.
Well, you will keep us posted as-
I will.
-this progresses? I think it's certainly a-
Of course, I'll have to abstain, because I'm, I qualify.
I will refrain from comment.
Heather, or, or, Ms. Lemieux, or, or Mr. Jeffries, do you have any estimates on, on what you, do you, what you anticipate the demand for the bags maybe?
That's what, one of the pieces of information, um, would be to identify exactly how many households it would be. So we have a rough idea of how many seniors in town, but, um, there are a lot of seniors that live in residences that don't use the pay-as-you-throw program.
Sure.
So, um, that information has to be parsed out.
Okay. Thank you.
And what is qualifying, what are we using as the qualifying age for a senior for this program?
Sixty.
Sixty, yeah.
It's way too young. Way too young.
And, and just to state one more, like, this is funded through a grant.
The purchase of the bags only. We can't, um, not the collection or disposal, that can't be run through the, the recycling program.
Okay. We will have that as a future agenda item as more information is gathered. Okay, we have the approval of minutes of June first, twenty-twenty-one. Has everybody read them over? And if so, if there are no amendments to the minutes as they appear in our Google Drive, I would entertain a motion regarding the minutes of June first, twenty-twenty-one.
I move we accept the, uh, minutes as presented for June, the meeting of June first, two-thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Excellent. Okay, so last week, I signed some warrants. Uh, there was an accounts payable warrant in the amount of five-hundred-seventy-nine-thousand five-hundred-fifty-four dollars and ninety-three cents. Another accounts payable warrant in the amount of one-hundred-twelve-thousand-two-hundred-fifty-two dollars and thirty-three cents, which was a Medicare Part B reimbursement. Payroll deduction warrant in the amount of five-hundred-eighty-three-thousand-five-hundred-seventeen dollars and fifty-seven cents. And finally, a payroll warrant in the amount of eight-hundred-eighty-two-thousand-six-hundred-sixty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents. And the action fi, action items from the board. Any committee reports? I will say that right before this meeting, the Finance Committee Appointment Committee, uh, met and interviewed two candidates. They were both appointed to the two opens, uh, three-year open slots on the Finance Committee, so, um, they both had a financial background, one was retired, one is still, uh, working, but they, they interviewed excellently, and I think they're going to be excellent members of the Finance Committee. Their term starts July first, but, uh, they have been informed by members of the Finance Committee that if there's a meeting before then, they would be given invitations and a chance to attend, even as non-voting members just yet. And, and both of them were named Tom, so there you go. No old business, town manager report.
Okay. I'll start with announcement of the existing vacancies. Following is a list of current vacancies in the following committees. Architectural Preservation District Commission, there are two vacancies, one citizen-at-large and one representative from the Historical Commission. Two vacancies in the Board of Assessors, which is a joint appointment between the Board of Assessors and Board of Sleckman until the next annual town election. One vacancy on the Bylaw Review Committee. Two vacancies for Commissioner of Trust Funds, which is also a joint appointment between the Commissioner of Trust Fund, Commission of Trust Funds and the Board of Sleckman until the next annual town election. One, uh, person recommended by the Open Space Committee, one citizen-at-large and one ex-officio member that is business owner for the Economic Development Committee. One vacancy on the Senior Workoff Program Committee, and one associate vacancy on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Interested persons can find the application forms on the town website and complete them and return them to the Sleck Board's office. The American Rescue Plan Act funding, so the American Rescue Plan Act that was signed in March of two thousand twenty-one included three-point-four billion dollars in funding for war, uh, coronavirus relief funding for municipalities, and these funds were, are to be dispersed in two rounds, fifty percent, um, upon request, um, and those funds became available on June first, and the other fifty percent, uh, no sooner than twelve months after the first dispersment. Requests for dispersments are done through a portal, and the Finance Director submitted our, uh, request today, uh, for our fifty percent, and based on the allotments that were published, um, our portion would be six-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-one-hundred-ninety-five dollars for the fifty percent of, um, this CLF RF funding, so this, and, uh, types of eligible uses include public health spending, spending, economic impacts of the public health emergency, lost public sector revenue, premium pay for essential workers, and water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. The funds cannot be used to replenish rainy day funds, um, or other reserve funds, or make a deposit towards your pension funds. I'll be forming a committee of, uh, relevant stakeholders to look at how we can plan to make a recommendation on the use of these funds, um, specifically for any important infrastructure needs in the town.
Is, when they're talking about public sector revenue, the one part that comes to mind is, would be the meals tax.
Well, it's loss revenue, so it's, it's compared to, um, I believe it's fiscal nineteen the period, and we did not see any loss revenue, so we do not believe-
Oh, between nineteen and twenty?
Yeah. I do not believe we'd be eligible for that category.
Gotcha. Okay.
I have a question as well. I know we approved some funding for school buses, uh, is that, is this eligible, is that money eligible through this program?
Uh, transportation, it cannot be retroactive, so it's as of, um, March, a certain date in March of two thousand twenty-one, I think it's March third.
Okay.
But more to come on that. So there's been a lot of, um, information advisories from the U.S. Treasury, um, Finance Director and I really were waiting for guidance from the state to come out, um, on eligible uses, and that's just starting to come out. We've attended different webinars and, um, heard from the Executive Office of Administration and Finance, who's, um, uh, dispersing all the funds, and will be answering questions on eligible uses. Update on invitation verb bids, we received filed sub-bids for the roofing flashing work today for the Public Safety Carport Project. The low bidder was Rockwell Roofing of Lemonster for twenty-three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. General bids are due next Tuesday, June twenty-second, and due to the recent inflation in the building industry, we expect the total cost for this project will exceed the capital article amount, and therefore would need to be subsidized through our facilities account budget. Um, so as we anticipated this is a need, we earmarked funds for the purpose in the event that the total cost exceeds the capital article, which was a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand. But we'll hope for the best, and, uh, next Tuesday, we'll know the answer. Update on the Flat Hill Culvert Project. The engineer for the Flat Hill Road Culvert Project provided an update, the DPW Director and I this past week. The engineered plans were submitted to Mass DOT and are still under review. We submitted a notice of intent with conservation in May, and our engineer and the DPW Director- attended a meeting, a Conservation Commission meeting on June 2nd. There were a few small issues with conservation that were brought up that need to be further defined and resolved that the engineer will address before their next meeting. The engineer brought to our attention that the estimated construction costs for this project are now $750,000. The DPW Director and I have asked for a breakdown of why the construction costs have escalated so substantially and are awaiting a response from the engineer. After speaking with the DPW Director, although it was our intent to move forward as quickly as possible in the new fiscal year with this project, we are going to submit a small bridge grant application in the hopes of receiving the additional funds that could supplement the funding we received through the capital article for this project. So as we learn more, I'll keep the board updated on that.
So that, of course, brings up the question is, those ARPA funds, since that's infrastructure in a way, I mean drainage, I mean, is that, could they be used for that?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Okay. And what was it budgeted as? It was budgeted as 400 and something, right?
428,500.
That's quite the increase.
Yeah.
I'd love to know how that, we got there too.
We do know certain information without knowing this as part of the permitting process that because of where the culvert is and there's the outlet for the other area where people use to access the leak and there's also a tributary that runs through there, that it changed the scope of the bridge, the culvert span, which increased that cost. It also required, it's going to require a, I don't know the terminology for it, for the water, for the brook to be displaced.
Like a Crawford Dam, you mean? Sort of?
Todd?
When they construct it?
Yeah, during construction.
Oh, so they need a...
They need to divert.
Well, they need some sort of temporary de-watering system?
Yes.
To construct it? Otherwise, they'll be...
Okay, right, right, okay.
Yeah. And there was...
But this seemingly is all knowable before the fact. Like, nobody uncovered this, that we're going to have a culvert where the water underneath, like, the de-watering system should have been known from the beginning, one would assume.
No, it didn't show the information that the engineers had. They didn't see the tributary.
What was the initial estimate? Do you know off the top of your head?
It was 428,500.
So they've almost doubled the cost?
Right.
It almost seems to me like they need to take a step back and maybe rethink the solution if it gets that pricey. I mean, we're talking about water freezing on a road, you know, a couple of months of a year and being a nuisance to people's driveway, did they think of maybe raising...
No, no, this isn't, no, this is, you're talking about the flooding on Flat Hill Road.
Yeah.
This is the culvert that's compromising the road.
Is that that culvert that failed a couple of years ago?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That's not a very long culvert, it's $750,000?
Well, that's what, and we knew about the project, so it's not like, you know, it's not like, oh wow, we looked at it and that's what it's going to cost, that's our first estimate. Like, we got an estimate and then now the real estimate is $325,000 more.
Well, it must include a lot of plywood or something.
Yeah, exactly.
It's changing, I think, at least one utility pole too that's in that proximity too, so that I believe was another factor.
I guess, I'm more than happy, more than willing to understand that there are things that get unearthed when you estimate it and then you take a look. But I think this is, like, the doubling of the product, the project, isn't one of those things to me. Like, somebody's have to explain how they were so far off. Like, we, I'm assuming, and please correct me if I'm wrong, we asked engineers to look at the culvert and what it would take to repair it as an estimate. Like, we didn't, we didn't go out there with like a pen and paper and come up with it, we asked them to come up with it.
Yes.
And now we're assuming asking the same people.
Yes.
So I'd love to know what happened between then and now of the conditions, so...
That's why we asked for the breakdown.
And this is still, this is just a revision to the engineer's estimate, correct?
It's a revision to, I'm sorry.
The engineer's estimate?
Yes.
Yeah, it's not a bid yet.
No, right.
Right.
Right. I'm not sure if inflation factors into this at all as well.
When did we get the initial estimate? Do you know?
In 2019, but we confirmed that during the capital planning process in 2020.
It was reaffirmed that that was the estimate?
Do, do we have a requirement that they need to keep the road open during construction of the culvert or anything like that, or can they shut everything down?
I don't recall that being, yeah, I don't recall that being part of the conversation.
I think the plan was to shut the road down.
Shut the road down.
It's very narrow.
No, I thought, I thought they were going to keep it at one lane.
Right now it's one.
That's kind of where it's going, Tom. Sometimes when you shut a road down in one lane, it can get much more complicated for the contract stage that, rather than if you just shut it off, they can get it done much, much more quickly.
Well, okay, we'll wait for the report from them. But again, that raises my, well, raises both eyebrows when it goes up that much.
Sure.
You know, 50,000, I mean, a 10%, 20% change, all right, I understand.
To me, it sounds, that big of an increase means they missed something, something in their initial pass on the estimate.
Yep.
I believe the original design was two arced paths through instead of one expanded arc, so a boat could pass through.
Okay.
There wasn't enough headroom for how it was originally.
So essentially, they're going to mirror the design of the existing culvert? So the existing culvert's just one arch culvert?
Yes.
And they're going to build something similar?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not this, that's a corrugated metal, right?
Right.
So this would be concrete.
Okay.
In other meetings and events, the Lunenburg Farmers Market will be starting June 13th, so Sundays and until October 10th, 10:00 a.m., until 12:30 p.m. They will not be holding a farmers market on Sunday, July 4th. Band concerts will resume on Monday evenings, 7:00 p.m., starting July 12th until August 9th. And if there is any of those dates are canceled due to rain, the rain date will be Monday, August 16th. This will be held outside the TCP Building in the front entrance. That's all I have.
Excellent. Any questions for the town manager?
I have, should have probably brought this up as an action item. I received a request from a resident, and this is the second request I have received, if we would consider on our agenda pushing the town manager report closer to the announcements. Just want to make sure of the reports.
Okay.
Okay. Any particular reason given?
Yeah, the reason I was given, and this is, a lot of people really like the town manager's report.
So it makes them stay tuned. It's a teaser.
And I think that the thing was that providing the information on the front end, if people have to step out or something, that it gives them that information upfront. And that is a lot of good information.
Okay. All right. We can discuss that further. And we have our workshop. So the first one is review the FY21 Select Board Goals. Did they put that in here?
Let's see, I know it's in the Google Drive.
I thought we reviewed these goals.
Yeah.
Yeah, so why are we reviewing them again?
Maybe to get, I think we're supposed to be, I thought, I see the number two.
It is under, there's a folder called Select Board Goals and Fiscal 21. I think it's meant to be in conjunction with your, creating your Fiscal 22 goals.
Gotcha. All right, so the first goal, how to do with the old primary school. And I guess we, so we brought this to town meeting to get the funding which we got from the town meeting approved, to get a landscape artist. We also had some drawings from Monty Tech that displayed some of them that we all reviewed and we all had a favorable viewing of them. So we should go out to bid on this as soon as we can so that we can get that going. I mean, this, so that's where we got on this. I mean, I think we're at the point where when we get these, these landscape architects renderings, we have a couple of public hearings, get input from the public, other boards, public at large, and work toward, I mean, the goal is to work toward presumably implementing the final result of that process to town meeting for actual construction. That's what I think we all agree the goal is. So I would try to keep that on here, you know, reword it to reflect that, but I would suggest that we keep at least part of this that's uncompleted on our 2022 goals. But I'm one person, so...
No, I agree.
As do I.
As do I.
Okay. All right, I will reword it so that it reflects that.
I do have one add-on action though.
Yes.
One of the things that came out of all of our discussion on this is that the Architecture Preservation District, if, when, if the board, when the board proposes to tear down the old primary school, that they're going to want to know what efforts have been made to try to salvage the building. So I've already made the effort of reaching out to Representative Sina and Representative Kushtemirik to get connected with people who have information on the resource of the funding that's made available to towns and cities to rehab buildings for the most part so far, we're not eligible. But I think that we should continue with that as an action, just that way when we, since part of the process is to request to tear the building down, that's going to be required.
If you can put that in writing to me in an email, then I will put it in the goal. I would also say that it is my intent that we again have a meeting, workshop meeting with the APDC. I saw their, their meeting, I don't know if there's been another one, but I saw the one that followed town meeting. And I think there was some, some miscommunication about what was, what is being attempted, but we really need to work with them and find out what it is, you know, they might want us to do short of the town funding a renovation on our own without any grant money, which again, I don't, I don't foresee the town approving given the price. But what, what are some compromises or agreements we could make to, you know, at least recognize the building and memorialize part of the building or something? I mean, I'd love to hear what their ideas are other than, you know, you have to restore the building or we have to get somebody else because, again, we've been through this, I don't want to rehash it, but the town has rejected putting that lot for sale privately, they want to keep it in town's hands. And because it's like that, no, no private entity is going to come and do anything with it if they can't buy it. And at least I don't foresee that. And if there's avenues to go and applications to be made where somebody else could redo it, I, you know, now is the time to do it.
I agree. And I think there was some misunderstandings as well that I think we should, we should get some clarity with them. So it's probably sooner than later.
Yes. All right, so maybe, maybe in July, you know, we can have a workshop in July and be with them and, you know, show them plans and talk about what we're, talk openly about what, you know, our intent is and how we can work with them to, you know, again, them fulfilling what their charge is as well as us fulfilling what our charge is and what the desires of town meeting are.
Right.
There's a lot to be reconciled there.
How soon can we start the bidding process?
So the Assistant Town Manager is working on RFQ, which I've done one pass at with comments, and we'll be reviewing it again and bring it to the board for review.
Okay. Excellent. Okay. Second on our list was the appointment process. So again, we got fairly far on this. I think we got past one in, Action 1 and 2. And then there was some disagreements about things there, so I'm going to leave this up to the current board, there's been changes in the board. I mean, is this a policy that we want to pursue or did the way the appointments go this year reflect what people want to keep as a process?
I think the process this year went well. I don't think it needs to be modified, so I'm in favor of dropping this goal.
I agree with that.
Okay.
I agree.
There we go. And objective three was concerning how do we actively get people involved in volunteering for town-elected and appointed positions? So we really didn't, we didn't really attack this at all. But I will leave this up to the board, I don't know if this is something they want to pursue or there's other goals we want to put in its place.
If I could speak to it?
Mr. Frank?
Thank you. This is an issue of importance to me. I say this frequently, and I'm not the only one who feels this way, but just the fact that people have to be dragged to serve on some of these boards and committees and it's hard to find people, I think that there, in an ideal world to me, there is active competition for every seat on every board at every level, but that's not going to happen anytime soon. But that's an ideal situation. You know, it keeps, it, you know, keeps people from getting complacent on the boards and committees that they're on, and it gets qualified people, you know, on the various boards and committees, people with, you know, subject matter expertise, et cetera, et cetera. So I think this general goal is important and that it, in my mind, it needs to, we need to put some effort into it.
So you want to keep this?
I want to keep it.
Okay.
I agree. I think we should keep it and come up with some plan to try to recruit people.
And I would say as part of that plan, stay off of Facebook.
Elections certainly don't, don't help participation.
Okay, well, we will, we will keep that. I'll, I'll leave it unless somebody has edits or anything, we'll leave it as is.
Yeah, I mean, I'm kind of torn, I mean, I don't have a problem with, with the idea of supporting, trying to find more engagement, you know, but I think that the nature of people is that if you have a problem, I mean, Lake Shirley was here for how many meetings? You know, I mean, when people have a problem, they're going to make their voices known. You know, I think, you know, Conservation Commission seems to be the only board that I hear the most complaints about. Five people initially step up to want to be on it? Part of me feels that, you know, the downside of effectiveness is that not everyone sees that there's a need to change, whereas when there's problems and friction, I think then in our democracy, people come out and get involved. So I'm kind of torn with how realistically what we're going to be able to achieve, but I think as a continuing idea of promoting public service, making everyone aware that there's opportunities to serve, I'm all in favor of that. But I mean, I don't want to be Negative Nancy here, I'm just saying that I don't, I don't know if we're going to be able to, short of that, I don't know if we're going to really increase participation. But it's worth a try, I guess.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mario?
I just, I think I mentioned this before, I think what we should do is try to identify any event in town where we can set up sort of a job fair, so to speak. Maybe some of us could participate in that, or actually the chairs of the committees actually should, to try to, you know, promote some participation in the boards. As I don't, where I don't, I don't really disagree, I mean, the only thing I would say is that we have to be careful of, when people get on these boards because they're angry, then they have an axe to grind, that doesn't, that never plays out well to me. I want them to get on the board because they're interested, they have an interest. And of course, you know, then they're more objective and they're more willing to help people in the community, that's what we want. So I would just say, let's keep an eye on what goes on in town and maybe we can, in conjunction of whatever event that might go on, we could set something up, a table up or something. I think we did it at, we did it at the car show, I think.
Yeah, we've done it several.
Yeah.
I've, I've helped man those and, and, you know, you just don't get a great response. I mean, I'm for this believing, this is something that for 18 years, I've, you know, 17 years been behind. know, 17 years been behind, I, I'd love to know if there's a magic bullet, I mean, I'm always willing to leave it out there, I don't want to shut the door, but I have to agree with Mr. Jeffries, it's been my experience that we've tried everything, you know, we could pass out free lottery tickets, you know, whatever, like they're trying to do to get people to have the vaccine, you're, you could always open raffles and stuff, but I don't know, it's, it's very difficult to get people involved.
Yeah.
You know, the, the most common way to get somebody involved is to directly ask them. Now, last year, of course, it was very difficult, because nobody saw anybody else in person, so, it was more difficult than usual, but even years when it hasn't been, you know, it's been very difficult to find people, and find people who stay, so, we've had, had, like, waves of people, and then all of a sudden, like, a year into a three-year term, there's lots of waves of, you know, resignations, because, you know, life happens and things like that, it just...
Yeah. The other, well, here's a question, and I bring this up because it happened to somebody who's very close to me, who's in my house.
That, that now is dumb.
Yeah. No, but, my wife applied for a cemetery, you know, she, she submitted a talent bank form to the Cemetery Commission, and never had her heard, and one, never got any correspondence as a result of that, and I was just wondering, when those...
Not they elected.
Was it...
That was a couple of years ago.
Okay.
So, when it was submitted, what happens? Does it just go on a file, something? I, I'm guilty of this too, because I used to take people's resumes and put them in a file, and I get, then I realized, well, this isn't helping me, so I created an electronic file on my desktop, and I could review that every, every now and then, it was always in my face, kind of thing. So, I, my question is, is where do they go when they're submitted? Could we do something different? In other words, are we doing something different?
Well, Cemetery Commission is, I think, elected.
Elected.
So, that, you would, she wouldn't have submitted a form for that, because that would be a position you have to run for.
Right, well, I think maybe that was a confu, that was, the issue was confused, but she never heard, in other words, she submitted it, but nobody ever called and said, "Hey."
Right.
"You don't submit that, that's an election."
Yeah.
And, I believe it was a Cemetery Commission.
Well, the follow-up should be, you know, we should have some kind of follow-up. If somebody submits something for a position that's elected, they should be told, "Hey, you submitted something that's an elected position, you need to run for it," except in positions where there's vacancies on an elected position, then you get appointed for a town.
I think that might have been the case, actually.
That might be, okay.
But, but anyway, even if it wasn't, some citizens submit a talent bank form, and in era, is there anything in place where we could maybe call them and say, "Hey, you got to do it this way, because, you know..."
Well, we've got, we've instituted a process where, where Elaine tries to, anytime there's an opening, review all the talent bank forms that she has accumulated, so, to see if people are still interested.
Okay.
So, we do try to keep them active.
Yes.
Yeah.
And she contacts the relevant chairman, forwards the application to that committee or board, so they can review the application and invite that person into a meeting, and lets the applicant know the status.
Mm-hmm.
But, sometimes there's not vacancies on, on committees that people submit applications for, I'm not sure on that particular instance with my wife, what happens. I don't recall, since I've been here, that there's been a vacancy on the Cemetery Commission.
So, it may have been done in era, but...
Right. I mean, there are, there are processes we can do to try, and I think we have over, over the several years, you know, since, since Heather's been here, I think with, with, now that she's gotten the staff, that the prior town manager had lost staff, I think there are ways to keep that up, and I think that's been positive, but yes, we, we have, some people have fallen through the cracks when they've applied, and they're like, "Well, I applied, nobody called me," and, and that's, you know, that's shame on us for that.
Yeah, well, yeah, but that answers my question, I just want to make sure that hole is filled, that's all.
Yep.
If I could add something, I remember a few years ago, you know, sorry, my recollection is vague on this, maybe it was four or five years ago, but when I was Chair of the Board of Assessors, we had some kind of a meeting in here with, well, I don't think it was a formal thing, but just, just, of chairs, all the committees, and, you know, I think part of that was, as far as getting the word out to the public, "Hey, what does your committee do?" Or, "What does your board do?"
Right.
Et cetera, et cetera, and maybe the fruit that, some of the fruit that was yielded from that was, there are pretty good descriptions, I think, of the committees and the boards on, on the town page now, I think they're better than they were, certainly. So, that's part of it, I mean, people knowing what these boards do, but, I just, maybe, I, I don't know how you do it beyond maybe what's been tried already, and I don't know everything that has been tried, but just getting the word out there.
Sure.
That there are these vacancies, that, you know, if you have, if you have an interest in this, or an interest in that, or a skill in this, so, I don't know that I'm adding anything here, I'm just recalling what we did a few years ago, and maybe...
Well, many years ago, many years ago, we started doing videos that were played on PAC, that said, you know, introducing the Finance Committee, introducing the Conservation Committee, introducing whatever committee, and did a, you know, a 15-minute, 20-minute thing, talking with the members, talking about what they do, you know, like we did at the Finance Committee, Appointment Committee, right before here, I usually tell people, because I served on the Finance Committee, what it is, and if you did it in a video format, so people don't have to read, and it's, you get somebody who's dynamic, you know, but we do it for all the boards, you know, do it for the School Committee, and do it for every appointed committee, you think a Board of Health, Board of Assessors, yeah, that would be helpful to, so people know what they do, and that could be one method, if we can, you know, work with PAC to try to get that program done, and just pick them off one by one, and then replay them occasionally.
Sure.
One of the other things I was thinking is, we go through this list every week, invite one of the chairs of one committee each week, to give their little, you know, elevator speech of why, why people should volunteer for their committee and what they do, you know, then, every couple of months, you'll cycle, cycle back through, and, and we'll see how that works, too, that's another thought I had.
Sure. I think that's a good idea, we could try to do that.
I mean, it sounds like, you know, one, one thing that's going to be hard is when we get to that one year where we remove the, the goal of trying to reach out to people to volunteer for public service.
That could be a problem.
So, it seems that, you know, we're kind of setting ourselves up for a permanent goal here, it may be better to create a policy, in which it's a policy of the board to engage in this kind of behavior.
Well, that could be the goal. The goal could be make a policy, because I don't think we have a policy, so there you go.
And so, maybe that should be the goal this year, to make, turn this into a policy, so that way, you know, when we lose this goal...
It hasn't always been on here, by the way. It's only been on here two years, this, actually, it wasn't on the year before.
Yeah, it's, it's a new goal.
Yeah, so, okay, so it's kind of...
Could I just add?
You may, please.
I got involved in my own town that I lived in over 20 years ago from a friend who was on the Conservation Commission, who approached me.
Still a friend?
Still a friend.
Okay, that's one, make sure.
And who also now works for another town. So, I think that's an important way to get people involved, is people you know to try to entice.
Right.
And, bring a friend to a meeting, acquaintance to a meeting, to, to let them know how they're involved, but I think putting people kind of on the spot, like you said, and asking them to volunteer, because people sometimes aren't willingly going to step forward, you need, and they want to, someone they trust to, and has had a good experience on the board or committee they're working on, to relay that and try to get them involved.
Well, I, I'm already starting that, because a friend of mine is moving from Westford to Lunenburg, they haven't closed on the house, they closed this month, moving into Lake Shirley area, so, I've already told her I'm going to lobby you.
You got some vacancies.
Yep. Okay, so now, that was what our review was, so let's go on to the second part of the workshop, which is new goals, let's start, because we're on the selectmen goals already, let's start with the selectmen goals. There's one goal I'd like to put on here, and I think we all talked about it earlier, and it fits into some of, some members, maybe all members, but something that's been interesting to us, and that is, we've always looked for ways to potentially assist seniors with property taxes, and I had always been told that, you know, it's really not possible at the local level, it really has to be done at state level, like, you know, my dad lives in New York, I've mentioned, where they have it as a state issue, but we have since come, from information from the town manager and research, that there are ways, because we have a home rule charter, there are ways for us to potentially do this, so I'd like to put that as a goal, as, and make it a, the most important priority, to try to work with the town manager and the Finance Director and their team, to look at ways that we can address this through the legislation process, through the home rule petition, that other towns have used, or, and other town has used. So, that's what I'd like to see a goal put out there to do, because it finally allows us to address something that many of us have talked about, maybe all of us have talked about at some point.
Yes. Yes, it's an issue of importance to me, it's one of the two or three major issues that got me sitting here, it's one of, it was one of my drivers to be here, so, I definitely want to work on that and drill down.
100% support it.
Okay.
You know, this is, I agree, this is something that I also campaigned on a couple years back, and, you know, I'd like to see us try to focus this in two different areas, one being the most vulnerable people among us, you know, those who, you know, are, are low-income seniors, and then I'd also like to see if we can look at something that's tied into the senior circuit breaker, which the, the state sets those income thresholds, such that we may end up with two different programs, but I'd like to look at, you know, I'd like for us to definitely do this and, and be open-minded about how many people this will apply to.
Right, okay. All right, I will do my darndest to come up with, flush this out, but if anybody has ideas, sentences, things they want to concentrate on, please email them to me, only me, and say, "I'd like this to be part of the, that, this goal, I'd like this to be part of the goal," I will try to bring it all together in a format that you see here from our previous goals. That would give us three goals, so we'd have the old primary school, still going forward to the next stage, we'd have this goal that we just talked about, we'd have the, the volunteerism one, I don't know if anybody wants to, if anybody has ideas about any other thing they want to add on this?
Just have a question, really, because it's probably way pretty mature to make, to make any goal out of this in particular, and it's sort of in process, at what point do we expect some feedback on the TC PASIOS, design, you know, for this next phase, this study?
We, we could ask the, the commit, Design Committee, and through the Chair, through their Chair.
Yeah, it just, really, it was more of a way of update, I know it's way pretty mature to be starting to set goals around that, but it's just on the radar, that's all.
Yeah, the funding for that comes available July the 1st, so...
Right, right.
After that point is when we can make some progress and have an idea.
Good, good point, yeah.
But, one of my suggestions, though, is along those, those same lines, which is, in order for the TC PASIOS, if the town, if the project is proposed at town meeting, the question's going to come up, what are we doing with Ritter Building, and what are we doing with Town Hall? And I think that as a goal for this board, since that is ultimately, I think, our responsibility to propose that kind of idea, I think we need to create the goal of looking into the reuse ourselves, looking into this, for the, for Town Hall and Ritter Villa, if they're vacant as a result of a move to TCP. And how I envision this is that it may be a subcommittee that then gets created, to look into, meet with the community, look into all those different uses that were identified by the TCP Design Committee that weren't able to be met, and to kind of figure out, you know, how we could do that. But I, I would envision that the TCP Design Committee will likely be at the spring town meeting with some, some articles, and I think we need to have answers to that question by then.
I agree, 100%.
Well, I, I'm, I'm smiling because I just, I think we've been in this movie before, but, okay.
Yeah. And I, I agree, it's got to be done, you got to answer that question.
I like the T sub. What do we, what do you, what do we think the best way to do this is, do you think a subcommittee?
I don't, I don't know, and, that wouldn't be a goal, then, then we would just, we would create an ad hoc committee to do it.
Do we, I mean, do we have capacity, I guess is what I'm saying.
Well, again, we didn't get very far on three goals, so if we put four goals...
Well, could you...
Can I make a suggestion? What?
Sorry.
Mr. Moreno?
The, the goal, the second goal, Mike suggested to make it into a, a policy, right?
Yes.
So, that would be fairly simple to do, so why don't we add this other issue as a, a third, third goal, and, or a fourth goal, but, maybe prioritize making the second goal a policy, and get that out of the way, so to speak, so we only have three goals. Is that possible?
Yeah, I think so.
I don't think that would be that hard.
That's possible.
Yeah.
I guess, I mean, just... Well, please, you, you had something you wanted to say.
I was just going to add, I think there, this has obviously been done by the Building Reuse Committee, a lot of that information was discussed and reviewed by the TCP Building Design Committee, I think this board could take that information and, and find a direction for uses, given that information, and not go through that whole process again.
I agree.
Well, I totally agree, that was going to be what I, in, in a matter of speaking, that's going to be what I was going to say, I'm like, we have all this information from two studies that were done about building structures, and the building possible uses, and costs, and everything, and sure, they're, they're X-years-old, but it was going to be like, what would be, like, what are we going to revisit that they didn't already visit? So, I think it's a matter of establishing what we see our vision as.
Yeah.
My hesitancy, which, which I will make obvious, is, it's my belief that if we put everything out there, this is what happened with the Reuse Committee, if you take all the buildings, and you tell everybody what you're going to do with all of them, you make five different targets, because there's some people who are like, "Oh, I, I'm just going to focus on TCP, I'm just going to focus on the Town Hall," and you blow the whole thing apart, because no one can even focus, because everybody is looking at everything, and it's so big, and they can't get their arms around it. That's why we focused on, like, just the primary school, which we still haven't even completed, so, you know, I, I just hesitate to put it out there, because I think we're going to be open to the same debate, that's my concern. I don't disagree with the fact that people are going to ask that question. I'm, I'm, you know, again, so I'm a little bit torn about how I think is going to be the most effective, that's what I'm really focused on, what is going to be the most effective, to make sure we get progress down, and that we don't start making, you know, I don't want to be on that clover, the cloverleaf, you know, thing, we just keep going around and around, and we'll try this, and then this leads to this, and we keep doing the same thing, that's what I'm trying to really avoid.
I, I don't disagree with you in one bit, but I think, and I said, "Answer the question," so maybe that's a little strong, I think what we need is some kind of plan, though, because you're right, we probably should focus on that one thing, but if somebody comes up with a question, we got to be able to say, that, that, just basically what you said, we, we, we plan, we have to get this done first, you know what I mean? We have, we, in other words, you got to put the cart before the horse.
Right.
So, we got to get the TCP building done in progress, and then, our plan is to do whatever going forward, to come back to you with a plan, you know, to reuse the other buildings, so, I think I'd approach it from that standpoint, in other words, not, you're not really coming up with a, any, you're coming up with an answer, you got an answer, because that is an answer.
Right.
And that's the correct answer, actually, let's get it done first, or let's get...
So, we got the goal done already.
Yeah, let's get in progress.
That's it? See, I'm, I'm laughing a little bit, but I'm, I'm serious, I am in complete agreement with you, that's my answer to people, it's like, my answer is, I don't know what we're going to do with those buildings, but we can't focus on all them at the same time, we need, in order to do things with this building in the Ritter, first of all, they need to have, the roles that they have have to be freed, before we can even do anything with them. Like, I can't say, "We, we're going to move this here, move this here, move this here," we can't even get a culvert done and a road passed, without the, the whole budget going crazy, right? You know, we just talked about that, how, so you need to deal with one building, and if that building can address some of these, the uses of these two buildings, then these buildings are available to say, "Okay, now we can offer them, and we can look at things." Because one of the things people look at, and for those listening, I'm not promoting this, I'm just saying it as an example, if somebody said, "Oh, we want this building," they talk about an art center, right? Well, maybe in order to be an art center, we need to lease it to somebody who's going to, as a nonprofit, to do that, but we can't even promote an RFP to lease this while it's a building that we're using, because we have no timeframe, it doesn't allow a nonprofit to even plan when it's going to be available, so no, no one's going to respond to that until it's available.
Right, so they, to add a word to your answer, you don't know yet.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a, that's a legitimate answer to that question, because you don't until whatever we're building is in progress, it's got to be in progress before you can make a plan to do something with it.
Well, that would preclude it from being a goal, then, because if it's going Well, that would preclude it from being a goal then, because if it's going to be a goal now for this year, we're not going to have any of these answers until TC Passios, the Design Committee, comes up with what their findings are on the new charge they were given, until we look at the landscape architects and what that project may be. So that's all going to be ongoing this year. I think if we put that one, I think it's just a bit, I think it's premature, because the discussion, that dialogue you and I just had, Mr. Moreno.
Right.
I mean, I think that what's helpful is a process. I mean, I think that there's a lot of misinformation out there. I think the town has done, in my opinion, a great job of maximizing the usage of all of town buildings. We've done an awful job of figuring out what to do with old schools. And I think that that's somewhat of a disconnect in the general public sphere of things. But I think we need to have a process in place that is looking at that when we go to town meeting. That, I mean, I agree with you in the sense that if we come with a five-point plan, that someone will disagree with a part and then disagree with the whole. And that I think we, you know, the approach we've taken is more of a piecemeal approach to help make decisions and keep moving forward, and I think that that's the same way we can go. But if we have an action item of, you know, reviewing the documents, reviewing what the results of all those different engagements were, so we know what those, what the known space needs are to include the TCP Design Committee's process last August, in which, you know, there were more needs and there was space to meet, I think that we will, that action item will let us know what are the known needs. And then I think that as another action, we can start looking specifically at spaces and saying, "What are all the potential uses for these rooms?" So as an example, you know, Boys and Girls Club are looking for more square footage. If we were to put that in one of these buildings, where would it go? And I think that having, even though it's not a solid, this is the plan, I think it would be helpful to have a, this is the process we've started, this is what we know, and that way we can answer that question at a loose level. But of course, you know, once that funding is approved, then I think as a continuation goal, then it's the next year you're really hunkering down and figuring that all out, of what are we, you know, really nailing that down. And I, but I think that we, beyond just the framework, I think, I think we need to provide to the town or show, demonstrate that we're in the midst of a process that is resolving this, and the work we've done in that process, and how that process is going to help us occupy these buildings when they're moved out.
Mr. Dwyer.
I tend to agree with you, Mr. Chair. I think trying to make this as a goal right now is a little premature, because we are putting the cart before the horse. But I think, once the work from the TC Passios Committee moves forward and it becomes clear what's going to happen with that property, in the lead-up to town meeting or something like that, we should put on the agenda, you know, building reuse, like one building at a time. And we go through all the data we have for that building and everything that's been done over the last 10 or 15 years, and say, "Here's what's been discussed, here's what we think's good, here's what we think's bad," to get it to the forefront of the public's mind, so they understand the issues and the information we're looking at as well. And I think doing that in a systematic basis, saying, "Okay, we know we're going to have, you know, Town Hall and the Ritter Building are going to be vacant, you know, one or two nights we go through Town Hall, one or two nights we go through the Ritter Building and potential reuses for that." Not that we're going to solve the problem, but as you said, Mr. Jeffries, we're going to, you know, let everybody know what can be done with those buildings.
I like, I agree. I think the only thing we're, the only difference there may be is just whether you make it a goal. I think it has to be a discussion, and I think Mr. Dwyer's plan is a good one. It's like, when we have those things, we can put it on the agenda. We can make a whole workshop where we do exactly what he just outlined. It doesn't have to be a goal, but we're going to show people we're addressing it. I just don't know that we can address it until, like, we wouldn't be able to address it until like half a year has gone already, which would preclude it from being a goal. It's not something we know we have to have, and once it happens, we can have that discussion. And we can have multiple discussions about it on multiple agendas.
Well, I suspect, not this year, but next year's goals, I would imagine that would be most likely, if things go well this year, that will absolutely be a goal for next year.
Well, one of the unknowns, though, is, you know, how many people are going to like the idea of TCP but feel so strongly that these buildings should not be vacant for any significant period of time, that they won't be able to support that project until we at least have something in motion that shows on a serious level that we've identified what.
My response, my response to that would be several things. So Mr. Moreno mentioned some of them about what the answer would be. But the first one would be, listen, we were dealing with five, the reuse committee spent like five years or so doing that. So we have lots of data. A lot of people took a lot of time discussing and digesting that data. We came up, excuse me, with suggestions that the town was involved in. And then, but now we got to the point where we needed to do something. So we took it as a goal for the primary school, we also, from town meeting, did the TCP Design Group. We are approaching those. And if those come to fruition, the answer to that question is, for those people who have questions, like, "We're going to do with those two buildings exactly what we're doing with the old primary school and TCP." We're going to push those next and get those involved and have them as goals. What we realize is that we can't do all five at once, because it won't work, because it paralyzes people. So if we can show that the two processes that we're doing now work, then I think we have some credibility to say, "The Ritter Building and Town Hall will approach the same way."
Yeah, if I could speak to this a little bit, too. I agree, I think the conversation has drifted a little bit from goals. I agree, there's probably no goal to be had here right now, but these discussions are critically important. And as far as the concern that you just raised, Mr. Jeffries, I might be one of those people, actually.
I already am.
And so, like, you know, because what I don't want to have happen is, we can't, well, we may not know what we're going to do, but what we can't do is allow two empty shells to just rot and then like be neglected to the point that it's like demolition by neglect. I mean, I think we just have to have, in parallel, some kind of discussion as to maybe what's going on over there starts becoming more clear. I mean, we don't even know what's going on over there. We don't even, we have to wait for the study, but that, I don't think we can do these things in series necessarily, because figuring out what to do with these two old buildings is going to, that's going to be a process in itself. It's going to take some time to figure out. And it may, if they're vacant, that's like, that's like not running an engine. It's a very bad thing for a building, to have a vacant building, so. And I also think we just need to get people's heads around the idea, just the community in general. I mean, just not in any policy way, or, I mean, it's nothing we can do here, but just from a mindset perspective, that not everybody's going to get everything they want in this whole grand plan. I mean, everybody's going to have to give something, I think, you know. You know, and we got to think in terms of broad objectives, like, it's important to me, for example, that, it's because people in the community have raised it, that there be some sort of consolidated space that has all municipal functions in it. That's a broad objective, that there be something that's friendly and accessible to the senior population. These are, these are broad 30,000-foot goals that I came to this position with, but there could be many ways of getting there, just, that's it. I mean, I'm, now I'm rambling, but I just don't want two vacant shells that rot.
I guess I can picture the, what I can picture is, I can picture the conversation that I feel like I've already heard a lot already, that comes out and says, "We can't support consolidating town offices, meeting, better meeting the needs of our community," you know, which is how I see the TCP project, because, you know, these buildings will be vacant. Now, here are the unknowns. The unknowns are, we know that at the last election, we had what, 8% of the registered voters participated. We know that at annual town meeting, that maybe we get 1% of the, you know, 2% of the registered voters to attend. So there's a huge unknown of how many people are going to be motivated to come out and vote when there's a campaign that says the town is looking to vacate Town Hall, and there is no plan for how we're going to use it. It's going to be, it's going to turn into the new old primary school. Now, whether that is true or false, it will motivate people to come out of their homes and vote. And so we have to, in my opinion, have a legitimate answer to it. That while we can, while we can look at this, I think, through a very rational lens, that there's also a huge emotional attachment to the physical appearance of these two buildings that is unrelated, in my opinion, to the functionality of these two buildings, but a lot of people are emotionally attached to these buildings. And to me, and again, there's, there's a 98% of participation that we don't know what their thoughts are. And even on the voting level, and we know that there's 92% that we don't know what their thoughts are. And I, and to me, emotional issues motivate people.
Did you have something? I can't, you have to let me know.
You sensed it, though.
What?
You sensed it.
I did, because you went. Okay, I'm going to step back so I can see you.
What I was going to say was, you know, you have that data available. Creating some sort of prioritized list that you could bring to people in a survey form, maybe a special town meeting on, so you can gauge where people's interest is in for uses for these buildings. And that will help you narrow.
Sure.
This seems like a second half of the year.
I would argue, I would, I would, I would counter-argue to your point that if you, somebody would say, "I'm not going to vote for this because you don't have a plan here." I would counter that says, "If I have a plan for this, there may be people who vote against it because they don't like my plan for this, even though that one is fine." You know, so it's very, very dangerous trying to second-guess voters and town meeting voters. It's just, it's very difficult. And I think, I think it's, to me, at least from, in my experience, it's safer to say, "This is where we're pitching, we're going to do this, you know, one or two at a time, so people can digest what we're saying, they can digest the money," because that's the other thing that's going to happen. If you tell everybody all the plans and all of a sudden they add up all the money, even the money may not be spent for over, maybe it would take six years. They're going to vote against it because they're like, "Oh, this is all coming." We have people who are voting against a Turkey Hill replacement, right? I mean, Turkey Hill Elementary School replacement, that the school committee says is seven years down the line. But there are people who are like, "I'm not going to vote for anything because of that." I mean, it's very difficult to know what motivates people. I think it's, if you focus on it, what I think we have to do to get people to vote for it is as much support from our own board, from other boards, from key community leaders and everything, to say, "We all support this, we looked at this." Get the select board, get the school committee, get the finance committee, get, you know, the planning board. Get people to say, "We've looked at this, we all support this." That's the best way to get things through. The number of people that vote for it, if it's an exclusion or how vote for it at town meeting, I always hear that, "Well, only 120 people come." I'm like, "Well, that's not, anybody can come." It's just 120 people choose to come, if that's what passes it, that's what I'm looking for. I need to get a majority of people who show up at town meeting. That's what we have to aim for. That's the audience that, for me, that motivates me. I need to make plans that make sense to them.
I agree, but we can't ignore that. That all sounds like an action item, by the way, but.
Well, I think the action item is, we need to have a discussion about it. I just don't think it's a goal. I think that's my point.
All right. Just one other point, Bennett, just, that's another point with the Turkey Hills, you know, seven, 10 years down the line, whatever it is. If there are going to be massive expenditures in connection with whatever may go on over at the TC Passios site and repurposing these buildings, to me, there's almost like a greater urgency to do that sooner and not have it bump up against that expenditure that's going to be coming down the pike, then all these things are going to be on the table at once.
True.
Yeah, you know, so.
Yeah, I mean, but people's motivation, what gets them to vote for projects or not vote for projects are all different. Some people would think like that. Some people are like, "Well, I'm going to save all my money and I'm just going to wait for the school project to happen, and I'm not going to approve anything, you know, because it's going to be too much money." And because there are people who already say that, you know, they're very concerned about taxes and, and, you know, although Lunenburg is kind of in the middle of the 351 municipalities and somewhere in the middle, we're not like near the top, we're not near the bottom. There are people who think that, you know, we're paying conquered taxes for, you know. And again, everybody's, everybody's financial situation is different, too. It's like they vote for what they can afford. So I just, that's why I always think it's bad to second-guess. I think we put together projects that we think are reasonable, that address the needs of the community, and we try to push those with those positive points. Like, we believe this is good for the community, and this is why.
Yes, I agree with that.
And we think it's a fair price, by the way, so, I mean, that's another thing. We, we're not going to, if everything is great, but we think the price is outlandish, then we're obviously not going to promote it, but, you know. That's, I think, the approach to get effective change, because otherwise we could be staring down, not at two vacant buildings, we could be staring at total stagnancy again. And, you know, people who look at that old primary school are like, "How long is that going to be?" Because now it is like 14 or 15 years. So if the, if the Town Hall is vacant for a year while we decide what to do after we potentially move it, you know, I'm willing to do that. That's a far cry from 15 years. You know, which things got out of control, and there's a reason, there's a history behind that, too. It's not like it was something that, "Oh, we had a chance to do something and we didn't." We did try to do things actively, and then the economy went terrible, and then we were just kind of caught, so.
Maybe more broadly than, I mean, the goal may be to work on this process, so that way we have this in motion, that we, maybe we don't have these questions answered, but that we have a process in place that we can also inform the community of that says, "This is how we're going to reuse, this is how we're going to figure out how we're going to reuse these buildings." In terms of, and, I mean, I still, I do see this as a goal, but I think that it's not necessary to come in the town and say, "With this, what are we doing? This, 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 and this, this building, this, this, that, and that." I think it's more important to come to the town and say, "We're going to occupy these buildings, and this is what we've established to figure that out." That, you know, if you're a member of the community, you have these space needs, that this is what we've established for how we're going to move forward. And that doesn't answer the question, but I think it gives a reassurance that we won't find ourselves as a community in the same place that we found ourselves in, you know, when these schools got vacant initially. Is that something we all can agree to as a process?
I can agree it as a process, I just don't think it's a goal.
Yeah, no, I agree with that process. You're soliciting information.
And we have a lot of that data, as the town manager said both times when she spoke in this discussion. It's like, we have all that data, so we know what the process is. Like, we did this process.
Yeah.
We just never got a chance to implement any of the things, because we never could come to agreement as a community, or even among boards sometimes, what to do with that data. So we have all the data. We know what our needs are. I mean, that was all established. And the TC Design Committee has all the numbers from all the things that they were looking to address, Town Hall, PAC, you know, Lions Club, the school requirements for their, what is it, ACT? Is that what it's called? What's the school program?
ACE.
ACE, I'm sorry, not ACT, ACE. So we have all those, we have all those numbers of space requirements for those, so. But I think it's just making a commitment to say, "Listen, we're going to get these, we need to do these in line." You know, again, it, there's a desire to do the whole thing at the same time, but that's like, that's like taking your house and like gutting all the rooms at the same time, and then you just live with a mess, and, you know, just focus on a room at a time and get there.
Well, and one of the things I think we need to remember, TC Passios goes wonderfully. Come up with a solution that consolidate town offices there. It's still going to take a year or two for that to get implemented. And that year or two, that's when we go full bore to find a solution for the spaces that are going to then be vacant.
Yep.
And so, before we get to that point, then, it sounds like we're not in favor, there's not group consensus to create a goal out of this, but there's consensus to make this a priority and that we have this process in place.
Yeah, I mean, like I said earlier, I think we need to have a review of each of these spaces at some point on the agenda during the year, so we can go through, you know, potential reuses that have been talked about in the past for Town Hall or for Ritter and those things. So we can reintroduce the public to all the things that have been talked about, so it can be fresh on the public's mind as well.
Yep, and I would say, I would commit to you that we'll always have a building on our goals. If we can get the primary school, for instance, we'll replace that with one of the other ones until all five buildings are addressed. That, you have my commitment on that. I just don't think putting two buildings or two things of the same nature, it just, it dilutes our ability to focus on both of them at the same time. That's what I would say.
So we should have these discussions at least a couple of more times prior to any project like this going to town meeting.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely.
So it's presented.
This is much better, by the way, in person.
All right, so we're going to stay with those. Did anybody have any other things they wanted to add to that?
Not as a goal, but we did talk last summer about a citizens award and a student award, and I said that I would take point in that. So I have made a lot of progress in this. I don't think it's a goal, but I think it's just something that.
Yeah, well, you should.
I don't think it's a goal, but I think it's just something that I'll make sure we bring.
Yeah, keep us abreast of as you, as you flesh it out, absolutely. All right, so if anybody has any ideas about the senior thing, please send it to me. You're going to send me something you wanted on one of the, the goal on the, the old primary, and we're going to keep the, well, we're going to change the volunteer one. So we're going to have two goals, and one is going to be a short one to make a policy of how to get volunteers. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, I'll try to flesh those out. Now, Town Manager Goals.
So I'll start with what I identified as a shared goal, as the senior citizen property tax exemption. So to establish a means-tested senior citizen property tax exemption, and this would be a real estate tax credit program to seniors that meet certain eligibility requirements. The actions associated with that would be to research different models of senior citizen property tax exemption programs in the Commonwealth and work with the Finance Director and Principal Assessor on the financial impact of implementing a reduced residential tax rate for seniors. Action two would be to present a recommendation to the Select Board on the program eligibility requirements, language of the home rule petition, and the financial impact on both eligible seniors and remainder of residential taxpayers. Timeframe of the recommendation will take into account the requirement of approval by Town Meeting of an article to petition the state legislature to adopt the home rule petition.
So, so you and I should work together on what the Select Board actions for this item would be, how do they dovetail into this?
Okay.
All right, so. So yes, I mean, does everybody agree that that should definitely be on?
Yeah, certainly do.
And continuation.
I was just going to add, maybe part of that would be to, as far as the eligibility requirements, that's going to be a lot of input from the board, it's going to be valuable, so the criteria to establish those requirements.
Okay.
Piece of that.
Well, like I said, I'll work back and forth, we email with you to get that.
The other two goals are continuation goals from fiscal '21, the reuse of 925 Mass Ave, which, this has been a goal for many years, but it's a long. I can't promise anything. I would love if it was the last year, but everything takes time and a lot of effort to get to, you know, actually where we are today. So action one would be to continue to work with the consultant that perform the environmental site assessments, Mass DEP, which was a new identified party that we discovered funding, a possible funding source for removal of the hazardous materials on that site this year. Still waiting to hear back from Mass DEP if we are eligible for that funding, for the, through the LUS program. And work with Mass Development to seek all available outside funding resources that will result in remediation of the site and limit the risk exposure of cleanup costs that would be borne by the town. Action two, depending on the results of associated steps under action one, and verification that the town is not a potentially responsible party with liability for a response to action costs and damages as required by Master General Law 21E Section 5, work with Town Council and the Tax Title Attorney to foreclose on this property.
Definitely support that.
None.
Any questions about that one?
No. Okay. Action, sorry, goal, third goal, out of order, is to, as a continuation goal for facilities, so to look at feasibility, creating an independent facilities department and improve the long-term maintenance and repair plan for town facilities. And the action would be to review the organizational structure, determine if a reorganization that separates out facilities from the Department of Public Works would create greater efficiencies and follow the process in the Town Charter as required by, for any reorganization.
This is the, the Jeffries goal.
So titled.
I'm supportive of the Jeffries goal, but it's a Jeffries. No, I think that's, yeah, I, I think we really need to do that. I, I think people, I think Michael's point that we should have, at any one point, somebody should be able to say, here's a spreadsheet about, this is the list of assets we have as far as real estate and the buildings, and this is what the planned maintenance are on them for the next five years. That just makes reasonable sense to me, and so I think reaching that with all the town buildings would be, really go a long way.
Those are the three goals that I've identified for fiscal '22.
Can I make a suggestion? So I know that you're already going to accomplish this, so maybe it's not a goal, but I know that you're, you've been working with different student populations, especially with the new civics requirement. I didn't mention during the action items, but, but I did watch the last school committee meeting, and the new civics requirements will go into effect next year, and it's a total rehab of, of how it's taught, and it starts, actually, in, in, I think, kindergarten, and it goes all the way through the, the education of a child, so that way citizenship is, is the process of citizenship begins to get taught in, like, first grade, and it's just reinforced, and you start off as a citizen of your, of your class, and then it moves up to being a citizen in the school and community, and that just gets, keeps getting built upon, so by the time a kid graduates eighth grade, that they have a full understanding of how their local government and state government works. And I mean, this is quite an accomplishment, I think, on a, on every level, but what's, the other requirement is that the students are going to have to have an actionable goal, where part of it is making an impact in their community. So they have to engage now with the town side, and I know that Heather's really the point of contact, working with the schools, and I have no doubt that you're going to accomplish this, but, I mean, it, does it make sense then to say that it's a goal, since it, you know?
Um, I'd like to, to be realistic and keep them at to three. I'm always available for any attendance at school functions. I've, every year I've gone to the Community Service Learning Class to speak with those students on town's needs and priorities and try to get them to do one of their projects on the town. And with the new civics program, I'm more than happy to be involved with the school on that at any point in time, so I would, I've never declined. I just wouldn't want to create a goal, because I do think that is an ongoing thing as well. I agree that it's important to have that development and understanding of how municipal, local, state government, federal government functions, and to get involved at a young age is, I think, important. So I'd be more than happy to work with the school on that.
So it sounds more like expanded job responsibility.
That's good fodder for the self-evaluation cannon, right?
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad they're adding that and bringing that back.
So they got another Gettysburg Address when they read it?
You know what? If I had a trade between them knowing the Gettysburg Address and them, and them being adults who attend Town Meeting, I'd rather they attend Town Meeting. I love, I, I wish they would know both, or do both, but definitely attending meetings that have, to vote, not just attend meetings. Any other comments or anything about either of the goals for the Town Manager or the Select Board? Hearing none. Upcoming meeting, so we have a meeting next week. I will be on vacation, so the Vice Chair, Mr. Jeffries, will chair that meeting. Thank you for that. And then our next meeting, so, our next meeting is due to be July, what is it, 6th?
Six.
So that's, that's our next meeting. You're not going to be.
I will not be here on the 6th.
And you're not here next week either, is it?
No, I'm.
Oh, you're not, you weren't here on the 29th, because I said maybe we, okay, got you. All right, so.
Are you looking to switch to the 28th?
No, no, I, when I said I wasn't going to be here, I said, well, maybe we can move, if the board was okay, to move it to the 29th, but then Town Manager said that she's not here on the 29th, so I'd rather you have your meeting in, anyhow, so that's fine.
I, I guess I'm saying, would we rather have the July meeting or the 20th? Meaning it's like two days after the, Monday after the holiday, I don't know if anyone's going on.
Yeah, you gotta have, like, post-fireworks hangover or something, or?
No, I, I guess I'm just saying, I don't know, I don't know if anyone else is taking a vacation.
No, no, but is anybody, is anybody not here on the 6th?
I'm here.
All right, so we're here.
All right.
Okay. Public comment from the public. Mr. Passios, welcome in, in person.
Hey, Passios, 56 Williams Street. As we spent the last 45 minutes roughly speaking about the two town buildings, the one we're here in now and Ritter, and a sizable amount of time talking about the old primary building, I'd just like to make a personal comment, and this is as a taxpayer in the town of Lunenburg. You know, we attempted to put a article forward to take the old primary down a little over three years ago now. That building had, had that article not been passed over by the Historical Society, I think we could have had that building gone in a park there already three years ago. Put that aside, that didn't happen, but I think you guys are dancing around the issue of the demolition of the prime, the old primary building. Call it what it is, put in the request for the demolition, and turn the energies for funding to rehab buildings to this building and the Ritter Building. Stop wasting time on a building that we all agree needs to be, needs to come down, and we need a new use for that property. Personal opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment from the board? So we have an executive session. I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session and to adjourn after exiting, after exiting executive session pursuant to Master General Law Chapter 30, Section 21, Paragraph 2, conduct, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or contract negotiations with union personnel. This is regarding the Town Manager contract, whose three-year contract is up at the end of this month. So I entertain a motion.
So moved.
For a second. Okay, going into executive session, roll call vote. Mr. Marino.
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Mr. (laugh). Lou.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
An aye for myself. It was nice being back in person, and for all the new members who this is their first in-person meeting, it's great, so welcome. This is what they're like. And to everybody out there, thank you for, for supporting us during that period, and hopefully we'll get things, we're well on our way to getting things back to what was normal. So thank you for your support and your help in, in every regard from then until now. So, good night, everyone, and we will see you next Tuesday.
The recording has stopped.